We're going to call to order the Caladonia Community Schools Board of Education meeting for December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Would you please rise for the pledge? Thank you. Please have roll call. Asper, here Barbara Garcia, here. Clement?
Here.
Isic, here. Morris?
Sayidu?
Here.
Wait. Here. Before we move on to our next one, welcome to all of you. If you are here just to listen and see what's going on, that's great, welcome. If you are here to participate in the public comment section later on in the meeting, we do ask that you fill out the public participation card, which does give us name and contact information for follow-up. This is a meeting for the school board that's held in public. This is your time to address the board as a whole, not a time for personnel issues or to address any specific one person. You do have three minutes to speak on a topic. If there's follow-up that is necessary or called for it, we will be able to then recall that from this card. If they need to be turned in, please, by the beginning of public speaking, back in the corner to the individuals that are there, and they will get those cards to us. Thank you. We're going to move on to number four, which is National Blue Ribbon School Award.
So at this time, I'd like to call Principal Beach and any staff members that I have from Dunton Elementary, if you can please stand. What I'd like to do on behalf of the Board of Education is just do a quick recognition. We have taken the time to celebrate on a few different occasions, but tonight on behalf of the Board of Education, the Caladonia Board of Ed would like to recognize Dunton Elementary for earning the prestigious National Blue Ribbon Honor as an exemplary high-performance school based on outstanding overall performance in the area of reading, ELA, and math performance for two thousand twenty-one. So we got a chance to celebrate with this particular staff, but I wanted to take time publicly to acknowledge the work of the principal, the work of these two young ladies right here who was able to attend the national conference with us, and the entire staff. Thank you once again for your dedication, hard work, and service that have paid off so wonderfully. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Board of Education. You know, just a great time. You know, there's so much going on in our world, and just to have something so positive to celebrate, the hard work that our staff puts forth each and every day, and just to see how much they love our kids and support one another for the best of kids, it was just, it was a really awesome event. So thank you guys so much for this acknowledgement. We greatly appreciate it and look forward to continuing to do great things at Dunton Elementary.
Thank you to all of you. Dunton is such a special place, and your staff and your kids, and you do do amazing things. Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to five, which is our consent agenda. We have the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one minutes, the December two thousand twenty-one personnel report, and the November two thousand twenty-one payable.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Can I have a second? Second. Thank you. Are there any changes to know, corrections, questions? No? All right, can I roll call, please? Asper, yes, Barbara Garcia?
Yes.
Clement?
Yes.
Isic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Sayidu?
Yes.
Wait. Yes. Motion carries. Our student representative is not here to join us this evening, so we're going to move on to seven, to our discussion items. Seven A is the two thousand twenty-two board meeting schedule. I think that all of you will find that you had, you had a schedule emailed to you. It followed the typical third Monday of the month, except for there were two exceptions to that. One was the August date, in case there's anything prior to start of school, as well as the December date that used the second Monday. Were there any questions on that?
July.
Oh, I'm sorry, in July as well. Any questions? If there's any issues, obviously.
We lost our microphone?
I'll yell until this point. So certainly, if there's any issues, please follow up on that. And then we are on to seven B, bond update. We have the fire protection change order at Duncan Lake Middle School.
Good evening. The Duncan Lake Middle School will bring to you the first piece...
Okay, we'll move farther away.
Bringing to you the first piece of a large change order for this building. Change order is fully covered under the contingency funds that were planned for this building. Bureau of Fire Services originally had approved the plan for this building, however, the on-site inspector decided differently. And we've gone through a long planning process with them to make sure that we correct and address the issues. The issue at hand is that the new science area that was a media center and this area just east of us, the other side of this hallway, that was a student services area, are now full classrooms and as such need to be addressed for fire protection to separate them from the existing other corridors that surround this area. The reason we're coming in January, or excuse me, in December for this original piece is that the parts that we are ordering, these are door frames, doors, and fire glass, have a twenty-eight week lead time. If we order them immediately following tomorrow, we expect to see them in late June or early July for installation. There will be an additional piece to this change order that will come later on in the spring as we finish out planning, how to do the installation for all this, and as well as some other minor changes that need to take place.
Any questions for Mr. Hess?
Do you know, do you have a rough idea on what's left in that contingency budget?
No. No, I do not. I know that it is substantial, and I know that it is comfortably can cover this, and will definitely be able to dedicate to other projects once we finish this one.
All right, thanks.
Tim.
And to be clear, this is just the building's contingency, not the whole project.
Correct. This is specific to the contingency that we planned for Duncan Lake.
Thank you. We will move on to seven B, two, which is the summer two thousand twenty-two technology. Mr. Hubble?
Get away from that speaker. So, good evening. This is just continuation of what was presented last month. I'm bringing it to the board this month for action. And this is a set of projects that we are planning on for the summer, hopefully starting in April. One of the reasons why this is coming to you so soon is because we are eligible to apply for Universal Service Fund discounts, which most of this is eligible for, and that's a fifty percent discount for us. So it's a substantial amount of money. The, I believe you've all had access to the board report for some time now, so I guess I'll leave it at that and see if there's any questions.
Any questions for Mr.? Thank you. No, I think we're all set. All right, we're going to move on to eight, which is our Board and Superintendent Report. Eight A is Curriculum and Learning Committee.
The Curriculum and Learning Committee met on December ninth at seven thirty AM. Mrs. Prokowski asked for an additional volunteer board member for the reproductive health community meetings in January. Both Brittany Barbara Garcia and Jason Sayidu will be serving in this capacity, which is a requirement of the reproductive health committee's curriculum recommendation approval process. These public meetings will take place on January sixth and from four to five, and January twenty-fourth from six to seven PM. Mrs. Prokowski shared the district report cards released publicly the last month. The results are based on proficiency, the rate of students reaching proficiency on English Language Arts and Math Assessments, and growth, the rate of students on track to reach or exceed proficiency on English Language Arts and Math Assessments within three years. As a district, we received A ratings on proficiency and A and B ratings on growth. Additional good news was shared with the recently released results from the U.S. News and World Report's first-ever rankings of public elementary schools. Four of our elementary schools earned Best Elementary School badge, placing them in the top thirty percent in the state. Escher Fund spending survey results were shared by Mrs. Prokowski on the top priority areas highlighted by our stakeholders. More information will be shared at a future board meeting on the finalized areas of spending with these funds in coordination with Mrs. DeVries, the Director of Finance. Areas related to the teaching and learning model and to the current work identifying priorities were discussed, along with plans to move forward with continuous improvement around extended learning and new teacher induction and mentoring. Standing updates from Dr. Martin, Superintendent Mr. Kingsbury, and Human Resources and Mrs. DeVries in finance were shared related to the Finance and Operations meeting held on December eighth. Meeting adjourned at nine oh three AM.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for that committee? No? All right, we're going to move on to Finance and Operations Committee. Tim?
Thank you, group. Finance and Operations Committee convened last Wednesday, December eighth at seven thirty-nine AM with all board members present. Mr. Hubble presented the technology bid results for the two thousand twenty-five summer work. We're pleased that the bids came in under budget for a total cost of six hundred nineteen thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. Much of the work is also eligible for the E-Rate reimbursement program, which will save the district a little bit over a half million dollars. Mr. Hess presented the Duncan Lake Middle School Fire Protection Change Order in the amount of hundred and sixty-nine thousand nineteen dollars to comply with the needed upgrades per the Bureau of Fire Services. This includes upgraded fire doors, fire door frames, fire rated glass, and is in one section of the middle school only. Excuse me. The work is planned for the summer of two thousand twenty-two. There were also discussions around the replacement of the projector at the Fine Arts Center. The projector is original to the building and needs to be replaced. Originally, it was anticipate, anticipated the cost would be twenty-six thousand dollars. However, it came in under the threshold, and we are moving forward with the replacement. Mrs. DeVries shared a few benefits program concerning the district in consideration of various employee groups to add added value to certain art development positions, as well as provide additional value to employees and their individual circumstances. Mr. Kingsbury gave an HR update. He informed the committee of a two-dollar per hour differential that will be given to pair of pros who are asked to sub for a day. Additionally, Mr. Kingsbury informed the committee that several high school boys are looking to start a boys volleyball program, which will likely be run through the Resource Center since boys volleyball is not an official MHSAA sanctioned sport. Mr. Kingsbury, Mr. Hess, and Dr. Martin spoke to the question of metal detectors and other safety-related items in schools and recent tragedy in Oxford, Michigan. The administration will continue to work with the Kent County Sheriff Department as it relates to evaluating current future school safety plans and evolving safety plans as necessary. Dr. Martin and Deputy Fredericks from the Kent County Sheriff's Department will be hosting a dialogue discussion on Thursday, December sixteen, at six PM in the boardroom in Duncan Lake Middle School. Dr. Martin also shared the open letter to the community from Helen DeVos Hospital officials, from Helen DeVos Hospital officials, that is. At this time, the district will continue to have mass usage as optional in the absence of any official health order, starting on January third, two thousand twenty-two. The meeting convened at nine forty-two. The next Finance and Operations Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven thirty AM.
Any questions for that committee? Jason?
I think you said the boardroom for the dialogue, and I think it's this room. I just want to make sure that was clear. Yeah, it's in here. Okay, I'm sorry. I just, when I took the minutes, it was in the other room, so thank you for clearing.
Space-wise, that'll be better.
Yeah.
Anything additional? No. All right, thank you very much. Thanks to both of our committees. Any additional board reports? A board member? Tim?
Just Merry Christmas.
Thank you. To you as well? All right, our superintendent report will be next.
Yes, so several ones I wanted to speak to. Just more good news. I shared with the Board of Education a link that was shared to me by another one of our building administrators, a site that I wasn't familiar with, but it was called School Digger. And essentially, what they do is go back and look at overall school performance for the entire district. And they, this site goes all the way back to two thousand thirteen. So one thing I took pride in is right now on this site, it's not official, but they have our school district ranked twentieth out of five hundred and seven public school districts in the state of Michigan. But what was most important is just in the last three years, we have been moving up in the right direction, and with the last year being the highest overall performance as far back as this website was tracking our school data. So I thought that was a great fourth or fifth confirmation of the great work that our staff has been doing. Another positive thing, state revenue appears to be up in terms of the overall revenue trend, so we hope that this translates into a good fiscal year moving into twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Other things that I want to note for the Board of Education, if you didn't get a chance to look in the memo, we have probably about seven or eight dates scheduled for capturing kids' heart training through the fortune of some of the ESSER funding. We see this as a positive training that we want to try to provide for all of our staff members, from custodians, bus drivers, teachers, everyone in the system. So if there is a date that works for you, please let us know. If you're not sure or you have some open flexibility, let us know, and we will put you in the one that has the greatest availability if you are interested in that training. Other news to share, staff dialogues. We did multiple dialogues last week. This was very much the same as what we do for the community dialogues. So we start out by kind of speaking to what's positive, then what has changed, and what our challenges are. So we were able to conduct the first two of three dialogue sessions for our staff. We have some other ones coming up this week, including one specifically for our transportation department. In addition to that, given the tragic situation in Oxford, Deputy Fredericks and the Kent County Sheriff Department has been extremely busy for the last couple of weeks, as we all have been. But he and I got together and thought it might be a good time to share and maybe communicate what we can with some of our community members, because as you can imagine, we've had a ton of communication about, look at this system or that system. So it's maybe a great opportunity to kind of share how we do work with our Kent County Sheriff Department and kind of continue to reevaluate and retweet training and some of our safety practices. Want to congratulate several of our students who receive state honors for choir. This information was posted on our Facebook, but we had about ten students from Caladonia High School Choir Program who will be advancing to the state-level competition. So we wanted to congratulate them and wish them very well for doing such a great job. So that's all I have for tonight. And just, Jason, you are right. The dialogue, if anyone is interested, that dialogue will happen to be in this room, and that is Thursday at six o'clock.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Martin? No? All right. At this time, we are going to move to nine, which is our public comment section. At this time, I have all the cards turned in. I will give the first three speakers just so that you can follow along, so we can honor your time and keep things moving. First, we have Melissa Van Gessel, then we have Jennifer and Victoria.
Good evening. I just have a quick update. We want, as a CEA, to recognize our music department. We have been very busy this month with third and fourth grade winter concerts. We've had middle school concerts. At the high school tonight is a choir concert. They've had band and orchestra. So we are giving a big shout-out to everybody in our music department. It goes into their evening hours, and there's a lot of preparation with the children for that. We also are doing a spirit week this week. It was very nice. I was on a Zoom with some administration, and it was nice to see some of our administrators participating in our spirit week today. So thank you for joining us with that. To piggyback on what Dr. Martin said, Oxford, we do have an elementary school in the district that has actually adopted an elementary school in Oxford. That principal and staff have been in touch with that school, and we will be continuing to do things with them as their school year continues on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a great idea, too. Thank you. Let us know how that goes. We have Jennifer, then Victoria, followed by Justin.
Yes, thank you. So I'm a parent and I'm a community member, and I want to talk with you about a video that I posted recently, introducing a parent group that I'm a part of called Cal United. Cal United came together because there are multiple parents who are facing various different obstacles with the school district and just not really feeling heard. We're a group of parents who, whether we're like-minded or not, agree to ask questions in a respectful manner. We don't shout, threaten, or intimidate. We don't call names. But we will ask questions, and we will keep asking until we get answered. Not the type of long-winded, flowery answers that sound nice in an email memo, but answers that have real content, real plans that are actionable. In the video that I posted last week, I mentioned that there are many parents asking the question, what is CCS doing to keep our kids safe? We want to know what steps have been taken or what steps are being considered to improve our security policy. What is our security policy? Here's what we know. On October twenty-ninth, there was a student at Iron Center High School who had a handgun in the school. A few days later, November third, a Caladonia student was removed from a bus by law enforcement. On November eighth, two unauthorized individuals were found to be within our high school building. And then on November fifteen, at the last Board of Education meeting, you guys did go into a closed session citing OMA fifteen dot two sixty-eight, Section eight K, which states that you can do that to address existing threats or prevent potential threats to the safety of students and staff. So I'm grateful that you're having those discussions. You met for over three hours, and when you came back out, the statement was made, there will be no action taken, and the meeting was adjourned. Two days later, a Caladonia student brought a pellet gun and utility knife to craft medics, and obviously several days later, there was a tragedy in Oxford. What I'm asking for today is, or actually earlier, your agenda did include a closed session today, but it didn't include a Section eight K. So it didn't look like there was plans to talk about security measures today. I know that there's this newly scheduled dialogue with Doc session on Thursday, and I'm just asking for the board to make a statement on school security so that the meeting isn't just a mini lecture, but something with real actionable content. I know that you guys met about it and talked about it, and we appreciate that, and we just want to know what steps will be taken, since it was indicated that no steps would be taken at the last meeting.
Thank you. Next is Victoria, then Justin, followed by Betsy.
Good evening. I want to start off by first saying how much I appreciate the board members, school administration, security officer, and all staff in Caladonia Schools for all of the hard work and dedication you have given to our school system. Myself and many other community members who couldn't attend today want to extend our gratitude and appreciation to you all. The past two years have been a stressful and exhausting experience for us all, but our school has done a great job persevering through it all to give our children the best learning environment given the circumstances. So thank you. You are appreciated more than you know. I also wanted to come and talk about the dialogue with Doc Series that Dr. Martin just held in our community. I am a newer school mom, so I have not had a lot of experience with the board meetings and dialogues, so I miss a lot. But I wanted to thank Dr. Martin for the dialogues he holds. I just recently watched a video of the meeting at Kettle Lake, thanks to Jason Sayidu posting it on Facebook to get more of the public to view it. I thought it was a great resource to help stay informed with the school information, and a lot of great topics were covered. I want to ask that if possible, Dr. Martin tried to hold more of these to keep the community involved and informed. I also would like to ask if dialogues all be recorded and posted on social media, if possible. There were lots of great topics discussed, and the questions asked at Kettle Lake, I really appreciated. And I can imagine that there were other questions and topics touched at the other meetings with the other schools, but we didn't get to see that. So it would be great to be able to see those as well, to maybe get more information that we're looking for. Most parents aren't always able to attend these board meetings or the dialogues because we are working or taking care of our kids. So it would be awesome if we could watch these, just like the Kettle Lake dialogue. So please take that into consideration, if possible, to record those and put them online for our school community to be able to watch when possible. Thank you for your time and for your dedication to our schools and our children. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin, then Betsy, and then Ed.
Good evening. As a parent of six kids in the district, I do want to thank you guys for what you do. I was the one that posted the video this week, as you all know. We all have different opinions on masking or other topics, even across the board here. Some are masked, some are not. We're just asking for transparency. On December the ninth, I went to the cricket meeting, which on the website, in the morning, it's posted at the administrative building. That was at seven thirty. At eight fifty-six, that meeting and the website was changed, stating that it was at a different building. We just experienced tonight that sometimes the meetings are confusing. Where are the meetings to be held? And we would just like some transparency on that. It's just weird that the website would change during the day. Why does that happen? Those are the answers that we would like answered. As Victoria mentioned, part of the video talked about having more people at the meetings. That's what we're asking for. We want more community involvement. The more that is involved, the more growth and change we can have. At the last dialogue with Doc, Doc said that he will not commit to having the meetings recorded. We would ask that you guys do record and screen those videos so that more people can be involved, even if they can't be present. Thank you.
Thank you. After Betsy, we have Ed. Thank you.
So I think we all realize that there's so much tension, whether it's the board members, us parents, us parents don't get along with each other. And I think it's really sad because our kids all go to school together. They all play together. They're in sports, theater, whatever they're in. There's no reason for it. So we have to find a common ground to start working together. I'm clearly conservative. There's people here that are liberal, and I'm actually okay with that. That's how society works. But it's not happening. I know my son comes home and tells me, you know, someone doesn't agree with him, or he doesn't agree with someone, because it's a political issue. These are children. But I have pointed out, because I had a, I'll say, I'm the one who had the ninety-minute conversation with Dr. Martin and Marcy, and it was phenomenal. It was one of the best conversations I think I've ever had with someone that I don't necessarily agree with on anything, but there was common ground, and that has to start happening in our school. But I did tell you that I would find some information for you about, we don't call it CRT, we call it DEI or SEO. And like I said to you before, I'm actually okay if that's what you want to teach in your school and if you want to promote it, okay. It's not for my son, but it is for other people. And I don't think we do a good enough job telling our parents what it actually is. So for the board members, I did print off stuff showing what the CRT is and the I Ready Map, what the statement is for the diversity and anti-racist stuff that I find troubling. Maybe some other people don't, and that's what you want, fantastic. But at least tell the parents, hey, this is what we're teaching. When we talk about... When we talk about transparency, that's what transparency we're talking about. It's in the school, it's not in the school. It's CRT, it's DEI, it's all the same. But just be honest. I don't know if some of you know what's in some of our curriculum, like I Ready Math, or what's in the SEL, or where SEL is founded, where it comes from. But people do need to know and be educated on it. And I think it's teachers' jobs, board members' jobs, whatever, just to let people know. But I didn't sort through or stabilize anything since it's big stack papers. I apologize, but please go through it. If you're going to throw it away, just give it back to me because I can use it for other things. I get it, but thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Ed.
Good evening. My name is Doug Smith. I've got a couple of kids in the district as well. First thing I just want to say, thank you for all you guys who volunteered to be up there in those seats and going through everything you know with the pandemic and the Doxer shooting and all the questions that come at both. So just thank you and I applaud you for all of that. The only question that I have kind of came up from the gentleman from finance who's talking about metal detectors. I know we just mentioned, just in the beginning stages there, but just wondering, yeah, I don't know if you can even answer it right now or maybe on Thursday, whether or not you guys, if that is an option you're looking at, that'd be going out on a parent survey to get parents' opinion on it as well. So that's it.
Thank you. I do believe that Thursday would be, would be a perfect time to gather more info on all of that. Thanks. All right, we are going to move on to 10, which are our action items. 10A is Neola's second reading and adoption.
I move that the board conduct a first reading of the following Neola policies. 0100, 0167.3, 3120, 6114, 6152, 7450, 8310, 8320, and 8320.
Yeah, I hate to amend this while you're doing it right now, but unfortunately it was printed wrong. So this is our second reading. So I really-
I withdraw that motion and I'll make a new one. I move that the board conduct a second reading of the following Neola policies. 0100, 0167.3, 3120, 6114, 6150, 7450, 8310, 8320, 8330.
Thank you. Can I have a second on that?
I second it.
Thank you, Katie. Michelle, are you good with the correction on your end? Sorry, I didn't catch that before. Any questions on those policies? Can we have roll call, please?
Asper, yes. Barbara Garcia, yes. Clement?
Yes.
Isach?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries. 10B is the 2022 board meeting schedule.
I move that the board adopt the 2022 regular meeting schedule as proposed.
Can I have a second? Next, second. Get Kyle down there and get him on. Thank you. Any questions on that? All right, roll call, please.
Asper, yes. Barbara Garcia, yes. Clement?
Yes.
Isach?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries. 10C is fire protection change order at Lincoln Lake Middle School.
I move that the board approve the Crispin Company to sign contracts for fire doors, fire door frames, and fire rated glass for the bond 2020 project. One bulletin six as recommended.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any additional questions on that? Can I have roll call, please?
Asper, yes. Barbara Garcia, yes. Clement?
Yes.
Isach?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries. And to 10D, summer 2022 technology renovations.
I move that the board approve the superintendent or the designated to enter into final negotiations and sign contracts with Datacom Group, Moss, Fiberlink, and Sentinel Technologies for the 2025, summer 2022 technology renovations as recommended.
Can I have a second on that, please?
Second.
Second, Kyle. Any further questions on that? No, can we roll call, please?
Asper, yes. Barbara Garcia, yes. Clement?
Yes.
Isach?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries. We're going to move to 11, which is our closed session. 11A is superintendent evaluation.
I move that the board convene in closed session under the Open Meeting Act to consider evaluation under request of the superintendent OMA 15-268, Paragraph 8A.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, Kyle. Can we have roll call, please?
Asper, yes. Barbara Garcia, yes. Clement?
Yes.
Isach?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we will convene into our closed session. We do have an additional action item that is listed for after closed session. That is our intention. There is always a possibility that things could be tabled, but it is our intention that there will be an additional action afterwards. I'd love to be able to tell you how long, but I don't know how long it will be. So we will come back to this room though to reconvene for anything that we would need to vote on before we close our meeting. Thank you. Thank you.